Order, let's do a roll call, please. We have a quorum. Thank you. Moving over to announcements, Mike?
Yes, sir, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Just a couple of quick things. First, some of you may have met him before the meeting, but I'd like to formally introduce Charlie Waldrup up there between Aaron and Lincoln. Charlie is our new planning technician and a great new addition to our staff. The only other thing is I'll mention to you that items 22, 23, and 24 have been withdrawn.
Perfect, thank you. So, our first item is consideration of the minutes. Does anybody have any comment or question on that? We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second, let's vote, please. Motion passes. Before we start the consent agenda, Mr. McCord?
Yeah, I need to recuse myself.
Yes, sir, thank you. So Keith McCord will stand on this one, recusing himself. We no longer read all the items on the consent agenda. Are there any items that we need to pull off and discuss? Any comments? Do I have a motion regarding the consent agenda? Thank you, sir. We have a motion and a second, let's vote, please. Motion passes, thank you. All right, moving on to old business, item number 21, preliminary plat review arbors at Arbor Trail subdivision, large lot easement subdivision containing five lots on 174.98 acres located off Hargrove Road in the 1st Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject parcel is approximately 175 acres in size, is located off Hargrove Road approximately 700 feet south of Boy Scout Road. The applicant is requesting approval of a large lot easement subdivision in order to create five lots off a new 50-foot ingress egress utilities easement. The site contains natural resources requiring protection, including steep slopes, a ridge top, and tree canopy. Approximately 95% of the site is under tree canopy. All zoning ordinance requirements, including those regarding the protection of natural resources, have been met. The applicant is proposing individual septic systems for the lots, and the Williamson County Department of Sewer Disposal Management has approved the request. Water will be provided by HB and TS Utility District. As no fire hydrants are proposed, building envelopes have been separated by 200 feet, and the fire apparatus access requirements in Section 3.05 and the subdivision regulations will be met. The preliminary plat is in order, and staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions, which must be addressed in conjunction with final plat submittal. Number one, a notice of coverage issued by TDEC will be required prior to the signing of the final plat. Number two, prior to submittal of the final plat, provide a letter from the water provider either stating the water lines are installed and functioning, or listing a performance bond amount for water improvements. Number three, a land disturbance permit must be obtained for the overall development. And number four, prior to submittal of the final plat, driveway and drainage infrastructure must be complete consistent with zoning ordinance requirements.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second on the floor, let's vote, please. Motion passes. Items 22, 23, and 24 have been removed, so moving on to item number 25. Call on Commissioner Hatcher.
And I am recusing myself of this item number.
Thank you. Item number 25 is St. Marlowe Amenities Center containing 19.83 acres located off Long Lane in the 12th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting approval for the St. Marlowe Amenities Center pursuant to Section 11.03D8 of the zoning ordinance, site plan must be reviewed by the Planning Commission at a public meeting. The facility, which is located in open space, will consist of an 1,113-square-foot clubhouse for the exclusive use of the residents of the development. The requirements of Section 11.03D8 have been met, a landscaping plan has been submitted and approved by staff. No water bond is being required by Millcroft and Utility District. Site plan is in order, and staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Number one, per the recommendation of the county's wastewater consultant, the posting of a performance bond for the collection system in the amount of $3,400. Number two, posting of a performance bond for landscaping improvements in the amount of $21,100. And number three, execution of a performance agreement for the above referenced sureties.
Do we have any discussion on item number 25? Commissioner Rose?
I'm seeing that there's parking in the amenities center and then the covered area on there. Do we know if there are plans for anything else, a pool, or tennis courts, or anything like that?
It's my understanding, Commissioner, that there are no other plans for no other amenities other than what's shown.
Further discussion on item 25? Do we have a motion? Thank you. Do you have a second? Thank you, sir. We have a motion and a second, let's vote, please. Motion passes. Moving on to item number 26, Williamson County Recovery Facility containing 386 acres located off Pine Wood Road in the 1st Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant, on behalf of Williamson County Solid Waste Management, is requesting approval of a revised site plan for the Williamson County landfill in order to add a 36,657-square-foot building that will be utilized as a materials recovery facility and an office and classroom space. Property in question is approximately 386 acres in size and is located on Pine Wood Road. Adjoining parcels range in size from approximately five acres to over 500 acres and are used for agricultural or residential purposes. Water services provided by HB and TS Utility District, and wastewater is handled via an individual onsite septic system. The Williamson County Department of Sewer Disposal Management has reviewed and approved the request. All zoning ordinance requirements have been met, including the specific requirements associated with landfills. The site plan is in order, and staff recommends approval.
Sir, any further discussion on item 26? Let's see. Commissioner Balter?
Same location as the one that's out there now or close by? You're just expanding it?
So, this is a new facility built on the landfill property away from the existing one. It's further, it's actually in the interior of the property.
The interior, the one that's out there or further down the road?
On the one that's out there.
That's all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion? Oh, thank you, sir, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to preliminary plats, item number 27, Stars Creek Phase II containing 18 lots on eight acres located off Meeks Road in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A concept plan for this development was approved in July of 2022. The applicant is now requesting preliminary plat approval for the second phase of the development, which contains 18 lots and 1.09 acres of open space. The preliminary plat is consistent in layout to that depicted on the approved concept plan. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat with the following conditions, which must be addressed in conjunction with final plat submittal. Number one, prior to consideration of final plat approval, the applicant shall submit HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney's office. The HOA documents must be submitted with the final plat, and the approved HOA documents must be recorded concurrently with the recording of the final plat. Number two, establishment of a performance bond for roads, drainage, and erosion control. Number three, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in favor of Millcroft and Utility District. Number four, establishment of a performance bond for the wastewater collection system. Number five, submission of landscaping plans and establishment of a performance bond for landscaping. Number six, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for the stormwater improvements. And number seven, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordination System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Any discussion on item number 27? Do I have a motion? Thank you, sir.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, let's vote, please. Motion passes. I'm going to first call on Commissioner McCord.
Twenty-eight, I need to recuse, please.
Yes, sir, thank you. So, item number 28, the homes at Mulberry Meadows containing 27 lots on 198.4 acres located off Teleferno Road in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A concept plan for this development was approved in July of 2022. The applicant is now requesting preliminary plat approval for the development, which contains 27 lots, 147 acres of open space, and the treatment, disposal, and storage areas for the wastewater treatment system. The preliminary plat is consistent in layout to that depicted on the approved concept plan. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat with the following conditions, which must be addressed in conjunction with final plat submittal. Number one, prior to final plat submittal for the first section of the proposed subdivision, a zoning certificate must be obtained for the completed wastewater treatment and disposal system. Prior to issuance of the zoning certificate, the applicant shall provide the following: A, a letter from TDEC indicating the non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system was installed and is functioning; B, as-built drawings showing the location of all system components and a sealed certification letter from the design engineer indicating that said system was constructed in accordance with the approved construction plans and specifications; C, a letter from the owner/utility provider indicating that it has accepted said system and is currently operating same; D, per the recommendation of the county's wastewater consultant, establishment of a performance bond in the amount of $100,000 to $100,200 for said system; E, the posting of a performance bond in the amount of $55,500 for landscaping improvements; and E, execution of performance agreements for the above referenced sureties as they relate to the non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system. Number two, prior to consideration of final plat approval, the applicant shall submit HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney's office. The HOA documents must be submitted with the final plat, and the approved HOA documents must be recorded concurrently with the recording of the final plat. Three, establishment of a performance bond for roads, drainage, and erosion control. Number four, dedication of right-of-way of 25 feet off the center line of Teleferno Road. Number five, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in favor of Nolanville College Grove Utility District. Number six, establishment of a performance bond for the wastewater collection system. Number seven, submission of landscaping plans and establishment of a performance bond for landscaping. Number eight, execution of performance agreements for the above referenced sureties. Number nine, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And number 10, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordination System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on item number 28? Do we have a motion? We need to, can you move the screen to item 28? There we go. Well, motion and a second, hang on. We've got a motion and a second on the table, so let's vote, please. Motion passes. Moving on to item number 29, Reed's Vale Phase II containing 58 lots on 60.9 acres located off Lampkins Bridge Road in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A concept plan for this development was reviewed by this body at the November 2020 meeting. The concept plan was ultimately approved by court order on June 14, 2021, and confirmed by the Planning Commission at its September 9, 2021 meeting. The applicant is requesting preliminary plat approval for the second phase of the development, which contains 58 lots and approximately 28 acres of open space. The plat is consistent in layout with the confirmed site concept plan. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat with the following conditions, which must be addressed in conjunction with final plat submittal. Number one, prior to final plat submittal of the first section of the development, off-site roadway improvements recommended by the county's traffic engineering consultant, i.e. the deceleration lanes at both entrances to the development, must be completed to the satisfaction of the county highway superintendent. Number two, prior to final submittal of the first section of the proposed subdivision, a zoning certificate must be obtained for the completed wastewater treatment and disposal system. Prior to issuance of the zoning certificate, the applicant shall provide the following: A, a letter from TDEC indicating that the non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system was installed and is functioning; B, as-built drawings showing the location of all system components and a sealed certification letter-
and a sealed certification letter from the design engineer indicating that said system was constructed in accordance with the approved construction plans and specifications. C, a letter from the owner slash utility provider indicating that it has accepted said system and is currently operating same. D, the posting of a performance bond in the amount of $320,500, $320,500 for the treatment and disposal system as specified by the county's wastewater consultant. E, the posting of a performance bond in the amount of $29,100 for landscaping improvement as it relates to the referenced non-traditional treatment and disposal system. And F, execution of performance agreements for the above sureties as they relate to the non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system. Number three, per the recommendation of the county's traffic engineering consultant, no more than 63 lots may receive final plat approval per year beginning on the date of concept plan approval, which was June 10, 2021. This number may be adjusted based on changes to TDEC's projected completion schedule for the widening of Highway 96. Number four, prior to consideration of final plat approval, the applicant shall submit HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney's office. The HOA documents must be submitted with the final plat, and the approved HOA documents must be recorded concurrently with the recording of the final plat. Number five, establishment of performance bond for roads, drainage, and erosion control. Number six, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in favor of Millcroft and Utility District. Number seven, establishment of a performance bond for the wastewater collection system. Number eight, submission of landscaping plans and establishment of a performance bond for landscaping. Number nine, execution of performance agreements for the above referenced sureties. Number 10, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And number 11, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan and Coordinance System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Any further discussion on item number 29? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Thank you. Second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Let's vote, please. Mr. Crowe, there you go. Passes. Moving on to final plats, item number 30, Daventry Section 5 reapproval containing 28 lots on 29.95 acres located off Tullis Road in the fourth voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A final plat for this section was approved at the May 2022 meeting. All of the required bonds have not been posted, and as such, the approval of the final plat has expired. The applicant is now requesting reapproval of the final plat for the fifth section of the development, which contains 28 lots and approximately nine acres of open space. The plat remains consistent in layout with that depicted on the preliminary plat. Staff recommends approval of the final plat with the following conditions. Number one, posting of a performance bond in the amount of $1,400,000 for roads, drainage, and erosion control. Number two, posting of a performance bond in the amount of $124,420 for water improvements as specified by Millcroft and Utility District. Number three, posting of a performance bond in the amount of $63,000 for the wastewater collection system. Number four, posting of a performance bond in the amount of $74,140 for landscaping improvements. Number five, execution of performance agreements for the above referenced sureties. Number six, at 80% buildout of the entire development or as directed by the Williamson County Highway Superintendent, Chase Point Drive will be open to the adjacent subdivision. Number seven, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And number eight, the applicant provide two copies of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan and Coordinance System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on item number 30?
I know that this is the last section for this subdivision or not?
So Commissioner, this is the last?
Section that will be coming in. However, section four, the approval has also lapsed, and you will see the reapproval next month.
Okay, so when we're talking about Chase Point Drive being continued into the next subdivision, well, that will still have to wait for section four to be, to go through?
Or 80% buildout of the entire development. So when that is completed, once they reach 80%, then Chase Point Drive will be opened.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, do we have a motion? Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Let's vote, please. Motion passes. Moving on to other business, item 31, 2023 Planning Commission submission schedule and schedule of meetings. Staff?
So this is just your 2023 meeting schedule. You always approve the next year's meeting around this time of year, and so we recommend you do that again.
Thank you. Commissioner Rose?
As I go out on the 2023 calendar, these dates all seem to be a day off.
Well, I'll tell you what, why don't we, we can do this in November just as easily as October, so let us go back and make sure that we've got it right before you. So no action, please.
Take no action. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you.